We're ready to begin. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 11th, 2017 Legislative Meeting, Board of School Directors for the School District of Upper Dublin. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody, please rise. Mr. Rosky, will you please lead us? Sir Rosky, will you lead us in the same alma mater? This is our role.
Dr. Ludwig. Mr. Sirota. Mrs. Rothman. Mrs. Good. Dr. Kim. Mrs. Sharpier. Mrs. Fransek. Mr. Rosky. Dr. Ludwig.
Here. All present. I'd like to begin the evening's meeting by welcoming our three brand-new school board directors, Ms. Amy Frisik, Teacher Sharpier, Stan Rosky. This is our first legislative meeting. And welcome back, Mr. Sirota, to the board. So we are nine board members, four of them, three new board members who were elected in November and Mr. Sirota has returned. One of the responsibilities of the president of the board is to assign committee members, members to each of the committees every year at this time. I'd like to announce the formation of the committees and those individuals will be serving on them. In the Education Committee, Dr. Ludwig will continue serving as the chair. We'd like to welcome Teacher Sharpier, who has vast experience in education, had been a longtime teacher, and also very, very involved in the high school with the children that have gone through very successfully in the high school. And Mr. Kim will also return to the Education Committee. In Operations, Mr. Sirota will be the Chair of Operations. Mr. Rosky, who's during the day, is very in all operations, his daytime job, will be on that committee, and also Ms. Rothman will be on that committee. In Finance, Ms. Good will be the Chair this year, Dr. Ludwig and Ms. Fransek will also be on Finance. In Personnel, Ms. Good and Ms. Fransek. In Policy, Ms. Rothman will continue to chair it. Ms. Kim will continue to be a member and Mr. Sirota will be joining that committee. By azones, we needed to change. Ladies, tonight, we'll be doing a vote for the representative for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. At that point, I would recommend that Dr. Ludwig serve on that. The Montgomery County Legislative Committee, Ms. Rothman expressed interest. Eastern Center for Austin Technology, I'll be reporting on that group. Educational Advisory Committee is going to be Teacher Sharpier. Teacher will be doing the EAC. Pennsylvania School Boards Association will be a report that I will make. PTA, PTO, Amy Frisik and Mark Sirota. Township will be Mr. Rosky, who is a former commissioner for the township. And the Upper Dublin Education Foundation is the president, also a board member, Ms. Good. So those are the assignments for this coming school year. Okay, I'd like to now move to student government report, Ben Helfer.
Thank you, Dr.
Are you going to say it, Ben, or are you going to...
Uh, no, not this time. You guys can come to the January meeting if you want to hear that.
Oh, really?
Thank you, Dr. Ludwig. It has been a busy month at the high school. The tri team is very excited for their meet this Saturday and are ready to kick off their winter season. At the recent Pennsylvania Thesping Conference, our drama club performed one of the Fall One Acts for a group of students and teachers. We also had three students qualify for national independent events in which they either perform or present a resume to judges, those students being Sam Spur, Zoe Halber and Sarah DeFago. The winter concert was on Friday, and the school's band, choir and orchestra all performed their festive piece of one-ordly, ending in the choir orchestra performing the Christmas song, Chestnuts Roasting Together, and wishing Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all who came. District auditions happened in November for choir, and three students, Lily Ashry, Charlie Belavage and Sam Kaplan, qualified for districts. District auditions for orchestra happened just this past weekend, and Taylor Kang, Natalie David, Tina Feffer, Mayaam Shahar, Jack Dratch, Frank Wang, Dan Liu, Belinda Chin, Annie Cheng, Heather Park, Catherine Song, Haley Rascus and Andrew Chen and Alexander Wallach, all qualified. This month and going forward, I'd like to highlight a club in our school that I don't usually talk about. For this month, it will be Chess Club. President Matt Schwartz of Chess Club has single-handedly doubled participation in the club in one year. Our chess team is currently undefeated, having won three matches this season and are the undisputed top of their division. Remington Zheng, as First Board, is ranked first in individual standing in the division, while Matthew Schwartz himself is ranked third. Meanwhile, the Student Government Association is cooking meals for the organization Aide for Friends. I'm happy to say that the school's energy has not and will not die down in preparation for winter break, though I would be lying if I said that I wasn't one of the students at Upper Dublin High School excited for the tournament there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, thank you so much. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Wheeler.
Different microphones tonight. I would like to update the board on our comprehensive planning process. Last week, I met with Joanne Piratti, Director of Strategic Services for the Bucks County IU. Ms. Piratti was instrumental in supporting the district four years ago in completing and submitting our comprehensive plan, and she continues to work with many area school districts to complete this work. Ms. Piratti will meet with the Cabinet and Administrative Council early in January to review the overall planning process and will present an overview of action steps to the board during our legislative meeting on January 8th. Because compliance with the PTE requirements is limited to planning for our education program and special education programming, I requested that we add components for finances and facilities planning as we go through this process. There will be a process to garner recommendations from the board, the administration and the DEA regarding the makeup of the steering committee and of the smaller committees that will be formed to address education, finance and facilities. Ms. Piratti and I discussed issuing a community survey early in the process, and she will do that. She also will request that board members provide individual feedback through a SWOT analysis, and she will share that with the board early in January. From January to June 2018, next spring, our committees will address all areas of goals, strategies and action plans. During the summer, the PTE web tool will be completed with the information garnered through the work of those various committees. We anticipate that the final draft will be shared with the board in September, posted on the website in October for the required 28-day public review, adopted by the board during the legislative meeting in November 2018, and submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education to meet the November 30th deadline. Mrs. Clay's office is underway with development of the special ed plan already, and Ms. Piratti will work with them to finalize that element of the overall plan because of a separate due date for the special education plan in May 2018, so you will be hearing much more about comprehensive planning in upcoming weeks. We also continue to garner positive news about our student performance. Our results of the annual standardized testing will be reported on later this evening. Additionally, we are beginning to receive internal data following the implementation of our updated response to intervention process, and the initial analysis indicates increased performance among our elementary students. A report on progress will be presented to the Education Committee within the next two months. All indications are that the continuous improvement initiatives that we have put into place are improving outcomes for our students. Very good news indeed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. After apologizing, I'd like to give a big welcome to all the young ladies here tonight representing our athletic teams, and also everyone else who are being recognized for academics. I'm sure, I don't want to take the bubble, burst the bubble, Mr. Schultz, but I know you all mentioned tonight excellence in academics, activities and athletics. So that is a piece, if you're not familiar with the stained glass in the back, that is the piece that we brought over from the old high school. While everybody's sitting here saying, "Well, our students, what old high school?" It was an old high school that this building has replaced, and probably one of the only things we thought worth keeping was that glass. Whenever we have a meeting and I'm looking right at it, it really brings home for me what we tried to do in Upper Dublin, which is, you know, a well-rounded education. So tonight, we have four presentations. I'm going to switch the order around for the first two. We'll do the Upper Dublin Education Foundation first, then we'll do the students, and we'll take a break in case you want to get home to do some homework. I'm sure there's no homework, no tests these next. How many days left before vacation? Wow, okay, nine. You're so gross and everything, and I didn't even think about how many more days before winter vacation, but there, I believe there's nine days, and I'm sure you have many exams and a lot of assignments that you need to get done before you can enjoy your vacation. So I'm going to ask Ms. Good to introduce the first presentation, which is B, which is the Upper Dublin Education Foundation's Greenfield Foundation.
Yes, thank you very much. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce Joanne Ron Feldman, who would like to say a few words at the microphone, they are trustees of the Greenfield Foundation, and joining them thereafter will be Michelle Boas, Executive Director of the Upper Dublin Education Foundation.
First of all, part, back to you, ladies and gentlemen, first, I appreciate it. This is the meeting's line of business. Okay, we're here tonight to present, for the 10th year of the Film Festival, another $100,000 check to run the Film Festival. This year is a little bit different. My wife runs it, but our daughter, who's a senior at Upper Dublin, 12th grade, obviously, is running the program for my wife. In addition, I have another check here that will present to our, or the, Vanessa, if you're the president, for $25,000 for the North Hills After School Summer Camp Program in there. So we just appreciate everything we do for the township, for the school district mainly, and just over the years, we're very happy to be able to be in this position, to be able to get this money out. That's it.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Boas, I'm the Executive Director of the Upper Dublin Education Foundation, and you just heard some amazing news from Jill and Ron Feldman of Greenfield Foundation, and I'm here just to recognize, publicly recognize their amazing generosity. For years, Jill and Ron have been deeply committed to this school district and to the Upper Dublin community. For those of you who don't know, Ron also serves on the Board of Commissioners for Upper Dublin Township. It really is hard to express this much gratitude. Through the Greenfield Foundation, Jill and Ron have funded more than $1 million in programs and equipment that benefit the students of Upper Dublin. What could I possibly say, except that we are grateful? We're grateful that our district has been the home of the Greenfield Youth Film Festival this marking the 10th year. We're grateful that the Upper Dublin High School students have access to the state-of-the-art Greenfield production studio and equipment, which include new upgraded cameras, a GoPro, a drone, I could go on and on. We are grateful for the enhancements we've made, we've been able to make to our Performing Arts Center. We are grateful that students across the district have access to WeVideo, a collaborative video editing software that students can access from their Chromebooks. We are grateful that our students at the North Hills Education and Recreation Center can continue to benefit from after-school and summer enrichment programs. Jill and Ron, we are grateful for your unwavering dedication to this school district. What makes it even sweeter is that I know personally how much you truly want to make a difference and how much of a difference you truly make. Thank you.
First of all, people, Kodak moment. Okay, again, thank you, thank you so much to the Feldmans, we appreciate it. If you've never attended the Film Festival, you're missing an amazing experience. I think we have 25 different schools participating. They come to our Performing Arts Center, and it is a truly amazing, amazing evening. Speaking for myself, I have not missed any of that. So I'm looking forward to the next one. Okay, so thank you again, thank you so much. All right, now we'd like to turn the meeting over to our Principal, Mr. Schultz, our Athletic Director, Mr. Grinder, and our Guidance Director, Donna Ward.
Thank you, Dr. Ludwig, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Feldman, for the opportunity to give our students throughout the district, speaking selfishly for the high school, in addition to sharing your daughters with us. You've also shared incredible opportunities for so many of our students to pursue a passion and to have an opportunity that few men early in the country have. So thank you very much. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the 2017 Fall Student Recognition Program. Members of the board and administration, we thank you very much for this time to introduce to you some of Upper Dublin's finest. Dr. Ludwig's already mentioned the window at the back of the cafeteria, but I already have a speech written, so I'm just going to keep going with it. Over 30 years ago, a simple slogan for Upper Dublin High School was penned by an Assistant Principal. To continue this day, it is frequently referenced, and as it reads very simply, excellence in academics, activities and athletics. With this wonderful crowd here tonight, we take a moment this evening to celebrate our students who have demonstrated excellence in two of those three areas. To the parents, the families and the friends, thank you all very much for coming out tonight to support our scholars and our student athletes. And to those students and on a logistical note, I got horsed them. When your name is called, asking for please come forward, you're going to accept your award here at this table, and then you're going to proceed through the line and shake the hand of all of our board members and our administrators. We will begin with recognition of the National Merit Commended Students and Semi-Finalists. Bringing those students to your attention tonight, would you please welcome our wonderful Coordinator of Guidance, Mrs. Donna Ward.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize our students for their accomplishments in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Each year, approximately 1.6 million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools entered the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2016 PSAT. Tonight, I will begin by recognizing our National Merit Semi-Finalists. These academically talented students represent less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors. Semi-Finalists, as I call your name, please come up to receive your plaque and be recognized for this remarkable accomplishment. Samuel Kaplan. Shazal Kevin Delon. James Entra. Jeffrey Fishman. Yeeji Annie, excuse me, Han. Eric Wu. Felix Lee. Logan Lloyd. Quinn Yao Mao. Lucas Cuccini. Ryan Wang. And Luiz Loaiz. Next, we have our commended students. Approximately two-thirds of the top 50,000 high scores on the PSAT received letters of commendation and recommendation for their outstanding academic promise. Commended students, as I call your name, please come up to receive your certificate and be recognized. Angelina Pan. Louis Hoffman. Victoria Hoffner. Moses Lee. David Maloosh. Creepy Mysore. Yukak Park. Paul Russell. Grace Wang. Amanda Yang. Armit Yun. And Kevin Zhang. Okay, congratulations to all our semi-finalists and commended students. Thank you.
So our program now shifts from academics to athletics. It has been another incredible fall sports season, and it is my pleasure to introduce to you our outstanding Athletic Director, Mr. Eric Rymer.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. We've once again had another successful fall season, earning a total of three Suburban One American Conference Championships. This success is impossible without the hard work, commitment and the sacrifices that our coaches and student athletes make in an attempt to produce a championship season. As a result, I'd like to start off this evening by applauding all our team's efforts this past season. The first team that we're recognizing this evening is one that returned back to the top of the conference where they hope to remain, is our girls soccer team. To share more about their accomplishments this championship season is Head Coach John Tapper.
Thank you, Mr. Grinder, Mr. Schultz. And before calling the girls up, let's just take a moment to thank the board, who did the time to recognize us tonight and to congratulate the members and the coaches of the other winning teams and all their academic achievements that are being recognized tonight. Congratulations to everybody. I'm extremely proud to be here tonight to see the most successful team in our program's history, who recognized with their accomplishments. Led by seniors Victoria Hoffman, Devon Jones, Jenna Marcus, Talia Nish, Erin O'Brien, Lindsay Schreiber and Caroline Wall, the 2017 girls soccer team piled a perfect 14-0 suburban one American Conference record on their way to a conference championship and a 16-2 overall record. This team possessed a rare combination of talent, grit and character, that ensured that they had a chance to win against every opponent they saw, and made it a pleasure to coach every single day. In addition to winning a third conference championship in four years, a league high of the upper double players were voted as all-league selections, and Junior Christina Hay was voted by the league's coaches as an all-state selection. At this time, I'd like to congratulate all our players on their achievements this year and as them step forward to collect them medals as I call their names. Starting with the seniors, Victoria Hoffman. Jenna Marcus. Talia Nish. Erin O'Brien. Lindsay Schreiber. Caroline Wall. Believe it or not, some of them are still out on the soccer field as we speak, so not here to the better of basketball. Juniors Emily Booth. Emily Brown. David Zaborn. Tina Hay. Adrian Hopkins. Aiden Theng. Sasha Peace. Madeline Sanders. Lexi Moss. Sophomores Julia Eustace. Marjorie Pardle. Lauren Candyman. And Flasheen McCambridge, local, and Anna Dash.
As Coach Tapper goes through the line, I'd like to invite Victoria Hoffner, Lindsay Schreiber and Caroline Wall, the team's captains, please go back up front. On behalf of the Super One League, I'd like to present to you the American Conference Championship Trophy. Congratulations. And Coach Tapper, on behalf of the school board and the athletic department, I'd like to present to you this plaque to commemorate your championship season. Thank you for your time and the commitment that you've given to our girls soccer company. Congratulations. The second team we're recognizing this evening has made it the tradition attending this meeting by winning the conference the last nine consecutive years, is the girls cross-country team. Here to talk more about their championship season is... is head coach Tony Giammarco.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start by thanking the board and the administration for hosting us tonight. And also, I'd like to congratulate the girls tennis team and the girls soccer team for winning the conference championship as well. Congratulations. So this year was another successful season. It was a challenging season. We had to deal with some adversity, primarily injuries. But we set four goals at the beginning of the season. We wanted to have an undefeated season, undefeated conference record, and we were 6-0. We set out to acquire team awards at every invitational that we competed in, and we did that sort of in unconventional way. We won team awards twice for varsity and twice for junior varsity. Probably the highlight of the season was varsity team finishing second at the Carlisle Invitational to be bringing together about 50 teams from Pennsylvania, Virginia, Maryland. So that was pretty impressive. We wanted to win our ninth consecutive conference championship. That was difficult this year. Like I said, with the injuries, we'll accomplish that. And we want to improve upon our 18th place finish at the American only District One Championship. And we did that as well, finishing 17th. We all know that the team, we all know that we probably couldn't have done a little bit better if we stayed healthy. So that's something for next year we can improve upon as well. So at this point, I'd like to bring up the young ladies. So please come forward when I announce your name. We'll start with freshman and second-team all-conference Elena O'Toole. Freshman Danielle McHillid. Freshman Robbie Lewis. Freshman in first team all-conference Sarah Escue. Sophomore Kaylee Jogger. Sophomore great same player. Sophomore Sheena Peir. Sophomore Michaela Papalardo. Sophomore in second-team all-conference Emma Kentiora. Sophomore Dispute Amory. Sophomore Irene Kong. Sophomore Annabelle Bluech Gustafson. Sophomore Amy Dong. Sophomore Jerry Longston. Junior Karis Wayne. Junior in first team all-conference Madeline Spauling. Junior Amelia Shatner. Junior Annabelle Lawford. Junior Eliotta Crane. Senior Leslie Quan. Senior in second-team all-conference Rachel Papalardo. Senior and the only four-year member of the team, Rebecca O'Toole. Senior co-captain in third-team all-conference Grace Murphy. Senior Alvin. Senior Paul Tyner. And senior co-captain in third-team all-conference Sadie Gustafson. And I'll finish with the way I finish both years. We will see you next.
All right, if I could please ask the team captains, Grace Murphy and Sadie Gustafson, to please come back up front. On behalf of the Super Bowl I League, and for the ninth year in a row, I'd like to present to you the American Conference Championship trophy. Congratulations. And Coach Giammarco, on behalf of the school board and the athletics department, I'd like to present to you this plaque to commemorate your championship season. Congratulations and thank you for all of your hard work and the commitment that you give to our girls soccer program. The last team that we'd like to recognize this evening is back for a fourth consecutive year as our girls tennis team. I would like to introduce to you our new head coach, Dave Shafer, to tell us more about our championship season.
I just want to take a moment before I really begin and thank the school board for having us here this evening, all the administration, Dr. Miller, Mr. Schultz, Mr. Reiner, and also extend a congratulations to all the students and student athletes that are here with us this evening. The women's, or the girls tennis team, had a really good season. We overcame this again early on and won our first 13 matches. We ultimately finished our regular season with a record of 15-1. We had about 20 different players contribute wins in the varsity lineup, which was very exciting for the squad just because of the depth that we have in our lineup. 10 of our 11 starters made an all-team, all-league team. Three of our players qualified for the individual district tournaments that we took hard in. And while our team season ended a little soon for us in the team district playoffs, we look forward to getting back at it next year. We will miss Leah, Amanda, Emily, and Anne, who are all our seniors who are heading off, but we're looking forward to returning strong for our 2018 season. At this time, I'd like to welcome up the girls tennis team, beginning with Jessica Chivens. Ava Hunter is not here with us this evening. Belinda Jin. My four days, you don't have to keep waiting back there. Come on, Jess. Connie Lou is not here with us this evening. Leah Mangefesta. Skyla Richmond. Emily Rosen. Cassandra Kiesich. Anna Tonzo. Anna Zell. Amanda Yang. Anna Yang. Anna Yun. And Anna Zell.
If I could ask team captain Mangefesta, please come back, return to the podium. On behalf of the Super Bowl I League, I'd like to present to you the American Conference Championship trophy. Congratulations. And Coach Shafer, I'd like to present to you this plaque on behalf of the school board and the athletics department for your championship season. Thank you for your dedication and commitment that you've given to our girls tennis program. Hopefully, this will be your first of many. Congratulations. In closing, I would like to thank the board, school directors, for their continued support for our athletic programs, as well as the upper-dub community. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Griner. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Griner. Again, I'd like to congratulate all of our students who are here tonight, and a special, special thanking to all the peers who are here. If it wasn't for your dedication, your driving, your pushing, these incredible young men and women would not be here tonight. So thank you so much for your commitment and your support of your children. We are going to take a five-minute intermission, and then we'll be back for the last two presentations. Thank you again for coming tonight. We are up to our third presentation. I'd like to, this is a presentation of our 2018-2019 general fund budget. I'd like to display our president's straight-up presentation.
Thank you very much. And for everyone remaining in the audience and certainly everyone who's at the table, you will know that this is the first of many presentations on the 18-19 budget. We have actually had a couple of presentations already at the finance committee.
I'm sorry, can we please stop the conversation? I have a hard time listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We did have the director of people services already started her third budget presentation at our November finance committee meeting. So tonight, we're going to talk about the timeline primarily and some of the things that have already been determined, and then look forward to the rest of the year. So let us begin. On September, right around Labor Day, PDE published the Act One Index for the 18-19 budget, and it stands at 2.4% for the school district of Upper Dublin. That number, many school districts have that percentage, but not all of them in the Commonwealth. We started immediately working on the financial projection assumptions because we do have a five-year plan, a five-year projection that we use, and we're working on that in September. And Mr. Lester came up with the first five-year capital plan that we've had in quite a number of years. So budget consumes about 75, 80% of the school year. In October of 2017, we actually worked with the projection model at the finance committee meeting, and cabinet-level budget discussions started. And we also started meeting with principals during the month of October. We've had about 10 budget meetings between October and November within, with various administrators. In November, there was a curriculum summit on the first day of the month. And when curriculum presents to the finance committee later this month, December 21st, we'll hear more about those meetings. Dr. Meyer, Mrs. Morrison, and Mr. B. We'll still, we'll be there as well to talk about technology on that evening. Cabinet, principal, and administrative budget meetings continue. And the director of facilities, again, another first for us. He gets met with each one of the principals to talk about some of their needs and wants at the building level and what their buildings and sites might need. In December, major impact items are formed. We're submitted to the business office, and right now, we are busy putting together all those items. And you may wonder what would generate a major impact form, requests for additional staff, some capital improvements within the building, items for the curriculum. All of those would add to the budget, and all will be considered by cabinet and administration and certainly the board at the later date. This year, we also have per pupil allocations, and I'm very pleased to announce that the elementary levels have come back with theirs already, and that's something new. Building budgets will be based on enrollment at a fixed-dollar amount, which is a step forward. And tonight, I'm going to talk about the 18-19 budget timeline, as I am. But we're going to be utilizing the opt-out budget again for the second time. Last year was the first time that we opted out and agreed to be held to no more than, and I'm sure we'll say this several times tonight, no more than the Act One Index, which I mentioned earlier as being 2.4%. Certification of Sterling Tax Credit, which is a calculation of how much earned income tax goes to Philadelphia from Upper Dublin. And as is required, if you work at Philadelphia, you pay that earned income tax. That calculation and form has already been filed with PDE. It's due on the 15th. Homestead notifications will be mailed to all residents who've recently moved in the township by December the 31st. That has to do with the homestead exclusion, which we'll work with and find out about in May of next year. Staffing continues to be discussed. We're going to hear that a number of times. Presentation a number of times over the next few months. And cabinet review of major impact items and five-year capital plan will be on the horizon soon. As is mentioned, on January 8th, there is the intention to put before the board the opt-out resolution, limiting our tax increase next year to no more than 2.4%. And we are required to file that with PDE within 10 days, in other words, January the 18th. And board action will be required again on the budget by the May 7th legislative meeting. And we will be looking at the revenue budget at the finance committee meeting and facilities and technology infrastructure. Mrs. B has the opportunity to talk with curriculum, which of course he's going to spend most of his time. But as everyone knows, technology also is very much integrated with infrastructure. So he and Mr. Lester will be working and looking at what projects next year will need coordination between those two departments. Negotiations with the sports staff from DESPA will begin, and staffing meetings will continue. As time goes forward, the timeline is a little less flushed out, but we do plan to have the revenue budget at the February 12th meeting. Finance committee meeting will have expenditures part one. We tend to focus on large revenue, or excuse me, large expenditure functions at those meetings, but the exact topics will be determined a bit later. And usually by March, we're through our third look. You will hear that related to our medical and pharmacy prescription plans. And we have a first look, a second look, and usually by March, we have the third look as we plan for our budget. Legislative meeting, we'll be looking at expenditures again and finance as well in the month of March. Looking at the major functions. And the homestead application deadline is due with Montgomery County at the end of March. Our legislative meetings in April will focus more on expenditures. We'll have a budget update. Because while we're moving through this process, things do change. We'll start out with a percentage as far as, for example, our medical. And hopefully, that number will decrease over the three times that we're looking at the amounts. And whenever those changes are known, we will make adjustments for those. Secretary of Budget certifies property tax relief. The Secretary of Budget then authorizes PDE to provide property tax relief. And that's when we, when the homestead exclusion is determined, what that amount will be. And, but I want to pause just a bit. It's been a little rough when it comes to the PDE and what we find out about the Commonwealth. So one of the unknowns as we work through our budget cycle is not necessarily knowing exactly what will be received from the Commonwealth. So that will be one of the variables to be focused on as time goes by. And this year, we had hoped, and in fact, there was a lot of optimism, that the current year budget at the state level would be passed before June 30th. Unfortunately, it was much, much later than that, long after we could make our spending plan final. May, again, property tax relief. That calculation goes into effect. We do a budget update. Usually in May, there's some transfer to some other funds. Or if the actual amount is not transferred in the month of May, a motion is put through, what might be set aside after the audit for a restabilization plan. And in order to comply with the PDE timeline by May 24th, we'll have to have the budget available on the PDE 2028, ready for public inspection. And then lastly, a pretty late game, so to speak. In June, we have to advertise. On June 3rd, there'll be updates with information from the state and what we know. And then on, I think it's June 13th, budget should be passed. So just to put in front of everyone, and this does not mean that we would have a 2.4% tax increase, but Act One index, again, 2.4% would drive in Upper Dublin approximately $2.1 million. But if we were to take a program, the same number of teachers, the same number of educational assistants, bus drivers, in other words, the same program, the same curriculum, and roll it forward for next year, there would be a $2.2 million increase in expenditures, just simply rolling it forward, which is about a 2.29% increase in expenditures. Peasars will cost about $850,000. Now, we did receive some good news up front. It did not go up as much as what we had thought it would. And actually, they even reduced projections moving forward. Those of us who are accountants, certainly not an actuary, wonder why. They did have a very good year rate of return for peasars. It still seems perhaps premature to be dropping the rate that much. And the amounts that I've just talked about, that 2.29% or 2.2 million, does not include propositions that we've talked about and actually the board during our assumptions had been put into the projections. So we're going to have some interesting conversations over the next few months. Now, that's all of look ahead. I want to take a quick step, a look back to June 30th of 2017. Good news, fund balance, $11 million. That's in the general fund. That includes all of our commitments and the setsites that are required. Still, when you get to the bottom, the report should be issued later this month, the amount in fund balance is slightly over $11 million. We also, on June 30th, had $5.4 million in capital projects, as well as debt service, approximately $2.5 million. But the fund balance really grew from revenue growth. And several one-time items, all positive, all very good to have a nice fund balance. But we had some timing differences to link with real estate taxes. That amount decreased during the year. But what does that mean? What that means is that we've collected money, we're able to book it, and the year ended June 30th. So revenue was just beginning earlier than what it has in past years. And we'll know very soon what the liens will be because the lien date is due January 15th, 2018. So I'll have some comparison there. We also had some good fortune last year in settling some one-time reverse appeals that were very favorable, but I do emphasize that they were one-time amounts. Although there will be some ongoing benefit because the assessed value increased, thus we will have increased revenue. But that has been factored in to our real estate taxes for the next year. And also, one other thing that would call everyone's attention, to capital projects funded $5.4 million at the end of June 30th. We also, the board approved a transfer in November of $1.5 million to capital. And we have spent some money to wrap up and finish paying for some summer work from 2017. Looking ahead to 2018-19, expenditure increases. Well, Peasars rate, not as bad as we thought, still 33.43%. That is for every $100 that anyone receives in salary, $33.43 needs to be attributed to Peasars. The full betrothal is that 50% of that $33.43 ultimately comes back to the district. Sometimes that gets held up depending upon what happens in the state budget, but we ultimately receive 50% of that money back. Healthcare and RX increases. We actually found out this morning what the first look is going to be. And it's approximately $1 million for both medical and for RX. First look, we get two more looks at that. Contracted salary increases. We know what those are for professional staff. We'll go later on tonight, about Act 93. And, but we start, as I mentioned earlier, negotiating with the sports staff. Sandy Run Middle School renovations or construction, that's an ongoing conversation. We do have $1.458 million in the budget to be transferred to capital projects. And we need to purchase more buses, as we've been planning to do, and continued facilities maintenance. Next is really just a slide in graph form showing and comparing the tax increases for the last number of years, Act 112, and comparing it with Act One. Several people commented on the fact that last year, kind of when the graph went out, it looked a little funny, but we changed the order of the tax increase versus the Act One because last year, for the first time, our tax increase was less than the Act One index. So this was 2.5 last year. And it's just showing that at this point in time, the index again is 2.4. Any questions on this first of 16 presentations?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bray. At this point, I'd like to open it up for questions from the board. Are there any questions? Mr. Rost. My stuff.
Brenda, could you explain what the, I think it was slide five, the Sterling Act grant, I think it was. Could you touch on that? Does it benefit the school district in any way if this grant or whatever was there for the Sterling Act?
It's actually a credit and it really doesn't. It's a calculation of the amount of revenue that the school district of Upper Dublin loses because people who work in Philadelphia and EIT Philadelphia wage tax is higher than what our income tax. So people don't have to pay taxes in both places. So it's actually a reduction of our revenue. A lot of districts located around Philadelphia have the same situation. Usually, the closer you are to Philadelphia, the more you're impacted watching this meeting. This calculation also does go into our, how PDE or how secretary calculates the property tax relief later on, but that's a much more complicated matter.
Are there any other questions? Mrs. Rost.
You mentioned we got the first look and you mentioned dollar amount. What's the percentage?
It's around 12%. If I recall correctly, they gave us three scenarios this time, considering doing some different things. The highest, I believe, was 12%. However, our pharmaceuticals, our X, was actually a negative. It's a decrease of about 2.3%, Tom, can you, Mr. Sikafoos? And which is a pleasant surprise. I don't think that's in front of it.
Yeah, pharmacy was a decrease at this point of 2.63%.
Okay, 63 instead of 1.
First look. I'm sure Mrs. Rost, first look as a very positive compared to what we've seen in the past with first look.
12% is higher than I would have liked for us.
That's the first look. We've had first looks that were higher than that.
Yeah, for sure.
But when we continue to talk about our projections, we were using a rate of only 8%.
Right. I'm hoping it will get down to.
We have some ways to go, hoping that it will come down to below 10.
Any other questions?
I have a question just for clarification. So when you were stating to the Act One index for next year that the estimated revenue would be 2.1 million, but the status quo going forward with just the current increases in contracts would be 2.49, I think is what you said?
I think as far as dollar amount was 2.2 and about 2.29%. But it's an excellent question and I'll take just a second. Act One impacts and is calculated from revenues. What I was talking about there are the expenditure budget.
Those calculations are including, as you mentioned earlier, about four extra staff and that's under consideration in some of the cases.
No, that is absolutely the case.
Okay, any other questions? See you. I'll fill over.
I don't have the numbers in front of me. I know we've talked about them at either previous finance committee or board meetings. But our assumptions are for changes in revenue based on increases, I presume increases in either the earned income tax or the increase in the assessed value that would also help offset some of those potential increases in expenses.
That's correct. We have been looking at revenue assumptions, how quickly. We have some great opportunities and there's revenue building going on that will generate new real estate tax revenue. It's just how, how soon.
Okay, anyone else? Quickly, you said that 2.4% equals the 2.1 million. So if I have my math right, 1% generates $875,000, which is.
I think that's a little high, but I haven't looked at the 1% piece. Are you calculating that just on real estate, just on real estate taxes?
Well, the question we always ask is if we drop down a tenth of a percent. If you remember with Dr. Resnick, we said it was in the past around $70,000 for each one tenth of 1%.
Correct.
But my calculation seems that, it could be because of our assessment that's gone up, that perhaps 2.4% raises more money than it did in the past.
Of course it would because our assessment has increased slightly. I think $800,000 might be a bit high, but I will certainly look at that.
Okay, if it was $800,000, 2% would give you 1.6.
Correct.
And this is 2.1, so that's why I'm thinking of $875,000. Okay, but that's important in our future conversation as we look at how much we want, you know, where we're going to be at the end. Okay, I do not see any other questions, Ms. Bray.
Just one thing that you may not be factoring yet. When we do a calculation of what the mill yields, we have to also factor in the collection rate. So it's never 100%. It's always 97. That's what we've been using for a number of years.
When the board starts talking about where each of us thinks we should be at, that makes sense.
I'll look at that.
We need to.
Of course, and before we get to those conversations, the assessed value probably will change two or three times.
All right, okay. And is there any update, Ms. Bray, regarding closings? Have you seen any additional closing in Berejia City or Washington Manor?
Actually, the month of November, there were not any closing, said either development. But we have a couple. We have several assessment appeals that we're working on right now and some favorable as well.
Okay, moving on. Thank you very much, Mrs. Bray. Moving on to our last, definitely say the best for the last.
In your eyes.
Not in Ms. Bray's eyes, for sure. But this is a, this is an abridged version of the presentation that we had at the education committee. But just to remind the community that we had, what you're going to receive, what you're going to listen to tonight, I'm sure Miss Ronson will say something about it, is it's a very abridged presentation. We urge you to visit the website to see the full presentation. And I know there were some questions if we were going to add some additional information. There was a community member that asked if we were going to be able to present the individual districts besides where we are. So I'm thinking eventually, we would be able to add that to last week's presentation, some additional detail.
Of course.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Dr. Wheeler and the school board and the community for giving the curriculum opportunity to make this presentation. As Dr. Luvinoz indicated, this is an abridged presentation intended for board members and community members who perhaps were unable to be present during the education committee full data presentation. You can see that there is a link directly on the board docs. And our unabridged version is also on our registered website. This fall, the board of school directors determined a list of 10 school districts that we would use moving forwards to benchmark ourselves against. They are all schools among the school districts in Montgomery County, most of which are contiguous to us with the exception of Lower Marion and North Penn. Both school districts that are often referenced in our conversations, both internally as well as in the community. With that benchmarking, if all PSSA scores from grade three through grade eight in the area of English, language arts, mathematics, and science are combined, Upper Dublin School District ranks second for benchmark districts and 20th in the state. 501 School District ranking 20th in the state. Barners has a very high ranking for our PSSA scores, something we're very proud of. This graph represents the change from the old PSSAs to the new PSSAs. The precipitous drop is representative of the level of rigor in the new PSSAs. And it has taken a little bit of time for communities across Pennsylvania to understand how the new PSSAs have affected the outcomes for our students that indeed, in one year, our students were performing in the 90s. And then with the new rigors PSSAs, there was a significant drop. I think that's a very good visual. In some ways, we're very grateful to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. With rigor comes more opportunity for growth. Another addition to the data look is a measure called Pivos. It comes from the National Evas Statistical Model that was developed in the late 90s and it is intended to show growth. This slide gives an overview of what that, what each color represents. Indeed, blue and dark blue are very good. Red is negative. Green shows one year of growth. Yellow is below growth limit. There has been some considerate conversation at our education committee meetings that there are occasions where schools have 100%. For example, Fort Washington received 100% in science a few years ago. The following year, one or two students were below that 100% proficiency. As a result, on this measure, there was an upside-down red triangle in growth. So while growth can be very positive, sometimes the look of growth can seem more negative than it should be. And overall, those circles represent looking vertically, data, and I apologize if I'm saying from the single, across grade levels, beginning with fourth grade through the keystones. Grade three doesn't have any growth data yet. The top row is English and language arts, followed by mathematics and science. And we're very pleased that two-thirds of those circles show very, very nice colors. You can see that dark blue across the top in the rectangular boxes and then the light blue for individual quintiles. In the areas where we show some red, we're certainly looking at it as part of our continuous improvement, particularly in the area of mathematics as we move through middle school. And then we'll take a look at our scores for a school that are significant. In terms of keystones, overall, we place third of note is that when we compare ourselves to PSSAs grade three through eight, Lower Marion and Lower Moreland are often among the top-ranking school districts. And yet, when it comes to keystones, it looks like West Hagan and Colonial exceed us. There has been some conversation about the level of importance that is reflected in terms of students and keystones. We can take a look. This is our Keystone Algebra. The first number that you see is the end of, the first number that you see is the banked student number. So if a student takes Algebra One in seventh grade, that student's Algebra One score is banked until the student reaches the 11th grade. And then that's reflected on our student performance profile. and then that's reflected on our school performance profile. That sometimes gives us a look at data that doesn't give us the kind of information we need for specific years and grade levels. So we also have an end of course score that gives specifically what happened last year in 2017 for students in whatever grade could be, from 6th all the way through 9th grade, sitting in an Algebra 1 first time test with the keystones. Most significant about those scores is that in 2013, we began with 76 percent, and there's been significant improvement over time. I'd like to mention that for our Sandy Brown students who are taking Algebra 1 in either 6th, 7th, or 8th grade as a keystone, their achievement, and that's about 50 percent, 55 percent of our students, their achievement is in the 90s. We're extremely proud of the increase in our Keystone Biology exams. You can see in 2013, we're at 72. We've made it all the way up to 90.2. That's significant growth and achievement. Additionally, last year was our first year of restructuring academic levels for 9th grade. We went from three academic levels to two, and we believe that the first year of data does show very positively that 2016, our end of course 10th graders for the Biology keystones were at 81.4 percent. With restructuring, we gained almost 10 percent to 90.9. And here you can see our Keystone literature results. We are awaiting the restructuring that's occurring currently in 10th grade as we determine the outcomes of that, and we'll be reporting in a first look for Keystone data in the fall of next year. Our school performance profile continues to go up, and you can see there currently with our benchmark districts, we are ranked 5th with not very many percentage points below the next school district above us. Interesting to note is that Lower Marion School District, that continues to be one of the number one top ranking districts in the state of Pennsylvania, their school performance profile at the high school level is not as good as it should be. Also interesting to note, compared to other data, and we believe that a similar data is occurring for Upper Dublin School District. Interesting to note that the Pennsylvania Department of Education is going to move towards a future-ready index, which will be much more of a dashboard approach, and it may be a way for districts to have a more comprehensive look at data beyond just school performance profile. Another example of school performance profile and perhaps some volatile data is in the middle school, school performance profile. While there isn't a three-year look because data was suppressed in 2014-15, it does seem rather spectacular that Sandy Brown Middle School went from the very bottom of Montgomery County to almost the very top. And if you take a look at specific data for middle schools, you'll see that there are other very high achieving school districts whose school performance profile at the middle school level just don't seem to reflect the kind of achievement that students garner by the time they finish school. And for the first time, we took a combination of our elementary schools, and you can see there that in our local data, we are ranked 3rd. Some very, very positive news with our SAT scores. We continue to be at the very top of achievement for Pennsylvania. Not only that, between 2013 and 2016, we continue to move up, and if you take a look at the 2017 total score, it is the highest score ever for Upper Dublin. We are waiting to see what our 2017 score is, but we feel very positive that students achieve well. This year, as you learned this evening, we had 12 national merit finalists, as well as a number of commended students. And if one were to take the percentage of students attending that particular high school, scaled for Abington Senior High School because they do not have a 9th grade, you can see by percentage, which is less than 1 percent of each of our high schools in this county, shows national merit by percentage, but we would rank 2nd, right below Lower Marion. Additionally, our ACT scores rise each year at the state level. We are among four or five others that are ranked 2nd with an average score of 26, and this year we're very, very proud that we had a perfect ACT score, which is of the 2 million takers, I think less than 1 half of 1 percent probability of a student achieving that high score. And our advanced placing scores continue to rise. You can see that in 2013, we did have 95.4 percent, but we only had 260 students taking 436 tests. By 2017, we have given, we've expanded that, giving more students the opportunity to sit for exams. Students took 654 exams with a very high 91.8 percent of students receiving a score of 3 or higher. And as a side, I believe there was a question at the education committee meeting, 40 percent of our students who are enrolled in AP classes are not mandated to take the exam. Approximately 40 percent of our students do sit for the exam. And that is all this evening with this abridged presentation. Questions or comments?
Thank you so much, Ms. Morrison. I liked, I liked the long one.
Okay.
But you did pull out, I think, the highlights. There's so much to be proud of, especially when we start talking about the well-rounded and the other things that we do at the high school board. This was really well. But there's a lot more than just that, those scores that I think we focus on, and again, the class, you know, the academics, athletics, you know, so that, that is very important activities. It's very important to... Questions from the board, please. Anybody to my left, to my right, to my right. There was, there's a question about, what do you think about that 40 percent? Do you think we can come up some strategies to encourage our students to have a better percent of numbers taken the exam?
For students who are sitting in their 12th grade year, who have already garnered college acceptancees, knowing that the college they may or may not, may be attending will not accept more than the number of AP tests that they've already accomplished, it doesn't always make sense for those students to take the exams. I think that's where we're seeing the greatest dip. I do think encouraging students to sit for the exam could increase the percentage of AP exams taken by some percentage.
I thought it'd be at least half, but I guess it's mostly seniors in the second half of the year. Whatever they're taking then, they decide not to take. I think one of the things that we're doing, one of the initiatives that Mr. that we started is the AP Scholar.
We do, under the leadership of Mr. Jim Arco, whom we met tonight as our cross-country coach. He is also our 612 social studies coordinator. And if you walk in the front entrance of our high school to the left, there is now an AP Scholars recognition wall, and we conducted our first AP Scholars ceremony a few weeks ago.
It just floors me. I think it's, you have to have taken at least four AP exams on average score of 4.5.
It is remarkable.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. France.
It's worthy more of a comment than a question. In the data of the 6th grade math scores, it looks like there's a real opportunity there to make some improvements in the transition of students from Eureka Math in 5th grade to Carnegie in 6th. And personally, living through this process right now, the student who was having an easy time in 5th and then moving to 6th, very challenging. I was wondering on a couple of fronts, have there been any discussions about getting the 5th and 6th grade math teachers together to have a conversation around perhaps where the disconnects are? Because I'm hearing some feedback from my own sub-teacher about that potential. And also, Mr. Broceus, at a separate meeting last week, principal, not principal, staff at Fitz, sorry for the feedback, mentioned that he's looking to expand opportunities for the summer scholars program, and just wanted to follow up and mention, make sure that that was a conversation where maybe a boot camp for these rising 6th graders to brush up on some math skills might be appropriate.
There is absolutely a conversation regarding transition from 5th to 6th grade. Here, the bar beyond a 6th to 12th grade continues math review that will include representatives from the elementary school. And I think it would be, I think it's important to mention that in 6th grade, we've seen the highest jump of PSSA scores, close to 10 percent over the last three years. This year, we've adjusted the Sandy Brown schedule so that it reflects instead of 46 minutes, 80 minutes of mathematics. And so I think it's going to take a little bit of time for us to live into that and see the organizational piece of that. Absolutely will be getting our 5th and 6th grade teachers together to take a closer look at that. It did not help that Carnegie Math changed its entire program without letting us know, so that our 6th grade team was faced with real challenges this fall, and I think that that might be reflected in some of the feelings of frustrations among the students and the staff. What I can say is that for students who enter Sandy Brown with the intention of taking Algebra 1 in 7th or 8th grade, they're passing at the 90 percent mark or above. So that's very positive, however, we have other students who are not, and I think that's very significant. And having some kind of math opportunity for, under Mr. Broceus' leadership, the summer school principal, I think that's a great idea.
Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Wheeler.
Briefly, we are planning for Mr. Broceus to do an update on summer scholars. Earlier this year, we're going to come to Ed Committee either in January or February, I believe. So there will be more opportunity to discuss some other improvements as well, that we are enhancements that we are adding to the summer scholars program.
Okay, we have reached the timely calendar. It's the first community impo. Ms. Evans, can you angle the podium a bit more that they're facing the board? At this point, please step up, state your name and where you reside in the township. We will follow in a four-minute time. For two young men that came in late, we do have packets, I believe, at that table. If you're really interested in terms of what's going on, if you're unable to follow that, so if you want. Good to see you. Good to see us around. Maybe some cookies in the back table. I was just stalling here. Okay, Mr. Swan.
Dr. Wheeler, it sounded, where's Swan, good sign. Dr. Luvinoz, excellent work, Dr. Wheeler. I think what I saw with the last presentation, the scores are going up, and that's, that's always good news. Very pleased to see that. A little question was that, as I understand, the SAT is re-normalized every year, so it's not really appropriate to say that one year's increase over the other's, you know, significantly or statistically or anything like that. What about the ACT? Is that also re-normalized? And, you know, it's good that the taxes are going to be within the limit area. I had some comments regarding, or a question regarding Hack and Access Center. Will that be coming back online right after Mark Burden wanted? The school board classroom just disappeared from the site. And I've been looking at Schoology, but Schoology just, just doesn't, it all give the information that I've been used to getting or looking for. I have a printout of, like I see on Schoology, and it's got lots of little pretty pictures and icons on it, but it doesn't give you stuff like Hack does, where you get a score, total points, a weighted score, a percentage, and things like that, in a nice, you know, tabular format. So hopefully Hack will come back online soon.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Is there anybody else I'd like to address? Can I see none? We're closing on the input. Thank you for your comments regarding the performance of the school district. We do feel that the scores have always been good, and they continue to go up. Regarding the normalization of the SAT and the ACT, Ms. Morrison, anything else?
I am unaware of any, of the ACTs and re-normalization. A brief look right now to see if we can give you any answers. I will say that we compare against other districts, which does help in terms of understanding where we might be.
Right, so if you look at the rankings from year to year, that would give you an idea of where we are, maybe more so than the actual score. And I believe the SAT has changed significantly, I believe, this last year in terms of being in line with state standards or an actual common core?
The SAT is now aligned with the common core, and that is an aptitude test. The ACT is a more front-end area test, and the SATs did include a writing exam over the last few years, but we continue to use reading and mathematics as the standard benchmark as most of strength's due.
Hack versus Schoology? No, Mr. V.
Hello. So for any parent that would like to learn more about using Schoology, we've had several parent events tonight, and we can continue to have more. But I would encourage you to take two steps. The first would be to go to the parent portal, the parent section of the website. So there are quick links, there are the parent links, and there are two sets of directions for parents. One is a set of setting yourself up, the parent portal directions. And if you follow that through, it'll walk you through using the interface, which is different from Hack. The second is how to support your student with Schoology. And those are the onboarding directions that we went through with kids, and those are probably as important as the parent portal directions. Really familiarizing yourself with how kids are supposed to use it, because then you can best support your child. There are some significant differences between a student information system like eSchool and Hack, that's how we experience it as parents, and a learning management system, which is Schoology. Probably the most significant was that when we just had a grade book that was online, that was a reactive grade book. So your child would be assigned something in school, your child would go home and do it, submit it to a teacher, and a day or two, or a week, or two, or a month, like passed for that grade, would then show up in Hack. And there's little you can do with the grade several weeks after it's occurred. And the biggest shift that happens with Schoology, and with any change, there's always a trade. But the biggest shift is that now the assignments are posted in advance. And for both parents and students, the most powerful tool is the calendar in Schoology, where you see what is coming up. The student can anticipate the assignment. There's a lot of context provided for that assignment, and you're planning now ahead. And as a consequence of that, the turnaround for feedback and grading has become much tighter. Now, grades will show up within a week. And there's a lot that you can do within a week, right? When a child has done something and maybe, like, maybe wasn't up to their standard, your standard, teacher's standard, that then, and that work is fresh in the child's mind and the learner's mind, and that conversation can be had. So that's, that's a big shift. But in terms of the grades themselves, the granularity that we had in Hack is there in Schoology. It's part of it is a different workflow and how to identify it. But having it on a one-day grid, that aspect is gone, and the trade is now I see my work in advance, which we didn't have before. The other piece is that eSchool as a company has been bought up by Power School and has an end-of-life road on its horizon. So continuing with Hack is not something that any school district has the option to do for many more years. And so we have to transition anyway. So that piece is also on the horizon. And last, Schoology's been nominally responsive, and so a lot of our users here have begun to give feedback, and it's probably one of the most popular learning management systems for K-12 in the United States. A lot of our peers in Montgomery County use it as well. And as such, they take user feedback very seriously. They prioritize it, and so... And so even in the few months that we've been using it, I have seen them respond to user feedback constantly, iteratively, saying, oh, you know, you would appreciate that feature, you're not the only one, there are hundreds of others who let us know, and they begin to integrate those features. And that kind of responsiveness is not part of the experience that we've had with Home Access Center or East School in the past. So I would encourage you, there's a little question mark, but in Schoology, you can click and give that thoughtful feedback, and that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. V. Any other comments from, from my colleagues on the board regarding the community input? Seeing none, we will now move on. Ms. Wheeler, do we have any announcements or communications?
There are none this evening.
Do we have minutes?
Yes, we do. Minutes from the committee's operations, finance, policy, and education over the last month, three from October, one from November, as well as the legislative meeting on November the thirteenth.
Okay, we have five sets of minutes tonight. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Rothman made the motion, is there a second? Okay, any comments or questions regarding the five sets of minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. We now move on to the education committee. Dr. Ludwick.
Thank you, thank you. As usual, there is an information item regarding enrollment, that's item A. And then we have two motions tonight. We'll take them together. The first one is conferences. The second one is student activities. Both were discussed in the education committee meeting, however, both of them have some additions. So I don't know that we need to discuss them in any details or anything to add about either one of them. Ms. Morrison.
Let's hear a second first now, let's see this way.
I move, I move.
Motion's made, and then Dr. Kim, the second. Okay, comments, questions, Ms. Morrison, anything to add?
There are no unusual additions for student activities. Student travel is student travel that has occurred on a regular basis.
Okay, Mrs. Rowe.
I have a question on, am I? Yes, a question on conferences. Can someone just summarize, what is the Linkit data leadership working on?
Linkit is a product that the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit is supporting the use of in Montgomery County school districts, as well as the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and I believe the Chester County Intermediate Unit. It is a product that would have the potential to replace Performance Tracker, which we use currently, as a data warehousing system. It also has the potential to do data analytics, to allow us to upload tests and have them be available to students online. A wide variety of potential there. They are hosting on this particular date on January third at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, an entire session on data and leadership. And we were just informed from the IU that we could attend that last week, and so we apologize for the late notice on that.
Okay, and so is this a consideration that we may start using this Linkit product?
Regardless of whether or not we start using that product, the day itself is about data and leadership around data, so it will be a useful conference, all of us regardless of whether or not we use the product. At this point, I don't have any idea whether or not we could start using it. I just know that the IU is recommending a Colonial School District, North Penn, I believe starting to use it, and the IU is eager for, you know, many districts in the county to use something similar.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Rowe, it's an excellent point. Since it was not discussed at the education committee, no other questions? We have a first one by Dr. Ludwick, second by Dr. Kim. No other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Thank you, moving on. I believe, Dr. Kim, you're up for people services.
And if I can, I'd like to take items B and D, B through D separately from A. So the first is to recommend items B through D, is two educational agreements, one's educational placement, one is to improve an educational agreement between student worth the amount forty-six thousand nine hundred eighty for two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, and forty-six thousand nine hundred eighty for plus a reasonable increase not to exceed four percent through two thousand twenty. The other educational agreement is for two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty school years, with reimbursement not to exceed a total amount of one hundred eighty thousand for the three years. And the last is an ed placement authorized approval for OT services per the I E P in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Motion's made by Dr. Kim, is there a second? Dr. Ludwick made the second. We're looking at these items B, C, and D. Any comments or questions or revote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, item A.
Item A is a resolution for expulsion that the board approved and adopt findings of fact, conclusions of law disposition of a matter of a student as contained in the appointed hearing officers proposed adjudication as presented to the board.
Is there a second? Second, Dr. Ludwick, comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, item A. Moving on to operations, Mr. Serow.
Thank you, we have two items for operations. One is the item we had most months, the excess obsolete non-repairable equipment this month includes a single typewriter. And the second is-
A what?
A single typewriter.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, sorry. You're too young to-
Thank you, Walker.
And the second is, as we discussed with the operations committee, to reject the bids for the administration Center building.
Second. Second, is there comments or questions? What is the next step with the administration Center building that we rejected the bids tonight? Is there a plan to build another option?
Right now, we're looking at different options. Most likely scenario, after talking with Tash and what codes we're going to have to meet, is look at possibly demolishing this building or replacing with a similar structure.
We have first, we have a second. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the operations committee recommendations tonight, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to finance, this is good.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the finance committee motions listed on, in the agenda, that's A through F. All of them, but one would discuss the committee, so we'll point out that item C is new, if you have any comments or questions about that in particular, and they want to take a look at it.
Okay, motion to approve all the items on the finances, is there a second? Who's that? General, Dr. Ludwick, okay. Comments or questions on any of the items in finance tonight? Mr. Ox, you have a question on letter F of that appraisal agreement. I understand, you know, this is the district side, we're appraising this. Is township also appraising this property for a lower assessment?
Typically, in Upper Dublin, the school district contracts for the appraisal, and then once the work is all done, the township, school district, and the county share the cost of the appraisal based on their tax rates.
Okay, and I also see that this firm already appraised this building within the last three years. Is there much movement? Is there a reason why we're reappraising this building in three years?
We are only updating the appraisal for seven hundred and fifty dollars, it's just because of the passage of time and current negotiations with the owner.
I guess I'm looking at the fees, if there's any, looking at this, Mr. Luke, he's going to charge four hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour if, for, you know, coming to, if his services were needed for filing, if they decided to go, how to say, contest this appraisal now, are we sharing those fees with the township, if that does-
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Anything you want to add, Mr. Bruce, Ben again? If you were, if you were? No, you're right. Okay, we have first, then we have second. Some finance recommendations tonight? No other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Moving on to personnel, this is good.
Yes, bear with me a little bit, I'm going to break some things out here. I'd like to take item A separately, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the F ninety-three agreement listed in item A.
Is there a second? Second? Second, okay. Comments or questions on the F ninety-three agreement? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Thank you.
Yes, now, in item B, I would just like to make a couple of comments. We'd like to wish Jerry Thompson, who has recently left our district after ten years of service as the assistant principal at the high school, he's now gone to the Math and School District, we'd like to wish him all the best in his future. In addition, I'd also like to comment that with sadness and gratitude, we do acknowledge the service of Michael Johnston, our Director of Transportation, who recently passed away in November, and I just want to acknowledge his service and thoughts and prayers over his family. With that in mind, I'd like to approve item B, or make a motion to approve item D.
Is there a second? Ms. Frans, second, thank you. Ms. Frans, second, second motion? Okay, any other comments or questions regarding personal recommendations tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to policy, Ms. Rowe.
Thanks. First, we have two policies for repeal. Policies for repeal have to go to two readings, like any approvals. So we have policies one forty-two and one forty-three, they're no longer needed for first reading for appeal, or appeal tonight. We also have a couple policies for second reading, that is one oh-three, one twelve, one twenty-five, and seven oh-one. These were before the committee before, and before the legislative committee for. We also have two administrative regulations for approval tonight, AR eight oh-eight and one twenty-five, and we have a first reading for policies one thirteen and two thirty-three.
And motion made, second by Dr. Kim. We're doing both four items at once, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Any comments or questions on the four items on the policy tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Thank you, Ms. Rothman. Moving on to other business. Dr. Ludwick, the first two items perhaps?
The first item is I move to accept appointments and resignations for the Upper Dublin Educational Advisory Committee as listed below. And the next motion, which is to accept the two reports from the E A C. And I should note, as usual, accepting the reports does not comply any specific stance on the recommendations as stated in the board policy. The two reports are social emotional issues and results of Upper Dublin alumni survey.
Okay, we'll do those first two items. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Frans, second, what? Teach, are you sure? Second. Okay, comments or questions on either of those items? Again, we always would like to acknowledge and thank the E A C for the work that they do, and congratulate those people who are joining, and also congratulate those who are leaving. We hate the path of God.
One, one person who, one of the resignations is our new board member, Amy France, who resigned to take her place on the board.
Understood. Okay, seeing no other comments, this is other business A and B. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to the third item. This is a nominee for Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, and I'd like us to nominate Dr. John Ludwick to serve as the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit representative. Second, Ms. Rothman. Okay. Any comments or questions? Mr. Shlofsky served in this position for many, many years, so it'll be, have a lot to learn about the operation with the IU. Thank you for serving another, another night out, Dr. Ludwick. And your picture gets on the wall with the IU, it's a great honor. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, we are moving on to the liaison committee reports. Be a little bit difficult since we have some new representatives here, and it will take some time to get this, but next month I'm sure we'll have full reports. The IU, Dr. Ludwick?
My, my first meeting at the IU will be in January, so I have no report.
Thank you. Legislative committee?
No report yet.
Eastern Center for Arts and Technology, our monthly meeting will be this coming Wednesday, and things are moving very smoothly at the foundation. And again, I believe Dr. Wheeler did send an email, the information regarding the open house at Eastern, beginning of March. All new board members are close invited, and if you've been on the board but would like to see Eastern again, it's not to be missed, please, please join us on that Sunday morning at eleven o'clock, or eleven-thirty, I believe, March fourth, whatever that Sunday is. There was a snow day also, but there won't be any snow. Okay, moving on to equity and excellence, Dr. Kim.
Sure, last Tuesday, Kim did an intel team group that hosted by Dr. Meyer, worried people could gather a lot of people. Tomorrow is the Asian American students and families, as well as in January fifteenth, we would like to host, or just announced that these groups is doing their annual M L K day of service, and if you can come out for that, it's a great opportunity to see students and families gather up there and serve the committee. Last announcement would just be is that January eleventh will be our spirit committee, where the committee chairs, all of us, come together to collaborate with each other.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. The E A C, instead of Amy teaching, will be reporting on that. Sherwood, you have anything?
I should probably report.
Dr. Ludwick will report, thank you.
Because as of the last meeting, I was still in the liaison. The last meeting was December sixth, and I was in attendance. The next meeting is, was scheduled to be January third, that was in conflict with the education committee, and they have agreed to reschedule their meeting to the following Wednesday, January tenth. I will also report on the four topics that they are researching this year. Best practices for spelling instruction, incorporation of student feedback, enrichment for all, and later start date for high school. So with this, this will be my last report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Sherwood.
Okay, we have other questions? Is this for later start date for him, or later start time for him?
Later start time, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, they, they want to start in December.
There's been a lot, a lot of literature, especially lately, I've seen about various districts and communities, looking at later start time and the implications for all, for all the other buildings. So I think it's something that we had community members speak about a couple months ago, and I think it's, it's a very interesting topic, and I, you know, when you first look at it, it's a no-brainer, and you have all the other implications, but I think it's something that should definitely be looked at. Okay, moving on to P T O, P T A, Mr. Serow, Ms. Frans, if you could.
I'll take a shot at that one. So Amy and I will be getting together to figure out how we will break these up, but as always, we do invite the P T Os to invite us.
as always, we do invite the PTOs and PTOs to invite us. Two meetings if you would like us there, and we will do our best to have a board member at the PTA and PTO meetings if they would like us. I will also mention to the community that the board does have the board policy, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, around the relationship with PTAs and PTOs that is under review this year, it's a very complex topic, and will take some time to get through, and it also covers, I believe, the booster clothes. And so that will be a hot topic for this year. Dr. Wheeler, do we have a date for the next combined meeting?
We do, it is January twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much. That's all.
It's policy nine fifteen.
Okay, moving on to township liaison, Ms. Rothman.
Mr. President, I thank you for your confidence in appointing me to this liaison committee. I will do my best to serve this board well.
Thank you. Okay, Education Foundation, Ms. Good.
Yes, I would just like to say a couple of things. We are off this one, however, I encourage everyone to take a look at our website. It's the end of the year, if you're considering making donations, the foundation is certainly a good option to consider. I would also like to point out that January twenty-seventh is the Harlem Wizards basketball game that we are co-hosting with the teachers, and there will be assemblies and more information, but take a look at that, tickets are on sale now, and there is a limited number of tickets, so check it out. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Solicitors report.
Dr. Ludwick, PSBA, Conspenius School Boards.
Yeah, I'll start reporting on the next one.
Okay, thank you.
The, I have the solicitor reported on it this weekend, it's just sunshine announcements, there was an executive session for personnel last Monday, December fourth, and a very brief executive session tonight to deliberate regarding labor grievance. I have no other report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this point, we're up to our second community input, please go up to the podiums, they can name who will resign in the township. It's a long walk, this is one. Dr. Ludwick, members of the board, Dr. Wheeler, just to touch a game on the Hack versus School ogy, perhaps, you know, a sidebar might be more profitable. Regarding Schoology being LMS, from what I see, it's trying to be all things to all people, and things that I'm looking for it to do, just starting to be available. Regarding same upcoming assignments, yeah, you can see them on Schoology, the same way you can see them on Hack, as well as the teacher posted. Whereas on Schoology, I see a grade thirty-one point five out of forty-five points, what's the percentage, what else is impacting the overall grade? On Hack, I can see that. You know, maybe there is a link somewhere on the page I missed, that I'll give us more detail about how to get this information, and if it's not there, hopefully they'll be getting it there soon, but I'm used to being able to go and say, you know, look at Hack, look at what's integrated, and say, all right, you need an eighty-seven point four on the next test as a minimum to guarantee yourself an A for the course. I can't do that with Schoology. I want people to do that. To me, that's matching learning. I can be able to say, here's your target, this is what you have to hit. So, you know, I hope I'm not expecting too much, I'm only expecting what I'm used to. I'd be glad to get more to it than that, if Schoology offers it. At this point, from what I've seen, I feel like I'm back, but, thank you, Ms. Sroer. Anyone else? People close, community input, Ms. Vila, if anything else, ahead.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Swan, and I do believe that a sidebar will probably move you forward, although that is, you know, one conversation between an administrator and a parent, and I always look for multiple opportunities to sort of spread that knowledge. The transition time is always tough. I will say that the overall, the overwhelming feedback that we receive from parents, and I think I said this at one meeting, right, in technology, you often don't get the positive feedback, right? No one calls Verizon to say, you know, I'd love to thank you for the past three months of just flawless service. But in this case, a lot of parents didn't reach out, because it was the first time that they really had a window into teaching and learning that they didn't have before. And assignments being posted in advance, the reason they were appearing in actus because they were being put into Schoology. But those are opportunities to accommodate all learners, right, including our parent learners, in leveraging the new system, and using it to support their kids. While I welcome the conversation with you and love to have it, I've always hoped into, what are the additional venues that we can have in addition to parent night information on the website? And anytime I can instruct one parent, I often go in and edit those directions on the website, because now I've expanded the net a little bit larger, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frans. Any other comments, Ms. Sroer?
Firstly, I want to say I appreciate, Mr. Swan, you bringing that to us, because I think it's the first time I've ever heard anyone praise Hack. And so, you know, to give some context, as Mr. B was saying, that, you know, there aren't many people who are unhappy that we switched. I think it's really good feedback that we have an opportunity to understand a way that somebody was using Hack in the past, that they can't use Schoology, or have not figured out a de-stud, or they can't, or, but in any case, either it's good feedback for us to provide those instructions of good feedback for Schoology to implement that functionality, and any opportunities we have to understand other examples of that would be worth soliciting, you know, ways that people use Hack that they're having trouble implementing now. That said, like Mr. Peter Grotto said, going back to Hack is not an opportunity for us because it is end of life. So we need to move forward and invest in the campaign with the platform of codes and continue to evaluate whether it serves our needs well.
Thank you, Ms. Sroer. Anyone else on the board? Okay, we have come to our final comments from the board. Superintendent, are there any final comments from the board? From the superintendent?
Just say welcome to all of you members.
Yes, I did that at the beginning.
Well, I'm saying, yeah.
But you were one of them.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
They survived their first legislative. Okay, I moved up before the adjournment, if you noticed, information regarding upcoming meetings, the information, operations and finance will be December twenty-first. The education committee will be Wednesday, January third, change of date. And our next legislative meeting will be January eighth, August of twenty-seventeen. I believe it's going to be twenty-eighteen. Is the timer showing? Okay, motion to adjourn. Dr. Kim, second?
Aye.
Who's that? That was good, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.